Westerho, the one that talent's gonna be on America. Got to tell you.
I suppose.
Uh huh. I can't tell you his name.
Somebody from Westerho.
He won it last year. His past year he won it.
Custodian?
Yeah, he's a custodian at West Pico.
Oh, yeah. I don't know. Can't remember.
I can't think of his name.
I can't either.
Richard Goodall, that's it.
Richard Goodall.
Goodall, yeah, I seen him, I seen him on my phone when I was scrolling down through the.
He's, he was the winner last, this past year. So they're having a twentieth anniversary coming up. He's appearing.
Try not to.
Part of that.
As part of that twentieth anniversary.
I knew that, but I couldn't.
And his line being.
She's.
Actually. And balance.
Wow. Thank God. I would think so, yes, yes.
There's a quick rain in my own house.
One more minute. Ten minutes late. Are you tracking it? I got a text.
You talking to me?
I'm talking to Janice. You can wait ten minutes later. I'll bet so. Excuse me, pardon me, uh, I'm gonna sound like this tonight, so bear with me. Let's go ahead and call the Sullivan City Common Council Regular Session to Order here, uh, for August twenty twenty five. You guys all would, everyone stand, face the flag and say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ellen, would you say roll call?
Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lemon, Councilmember Mayfield, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember McClanahan.
I'm here.
And we are expecting Attorney Falwell.
Yep.
Police Chief Garrett.
Here.
Fire Chief Robertson.
Here.
Okay, and we also have.
All of them.
We also have, uh, Tony and.
Utility Superintendent, Street Superintendent, Department Superintendent, it's all present here.
Oh, and Cody.
And Sam. Yeah. He's here. Uh, yeah, last minute, there was a council member that could not make it last minute. Uh, there will not be a quorum tonight, um, we will just have a meeting, so there's no decisions, no, no, uh, um, yeah, just no decision gonna be made, so, uh, we'll go ahead with the meeting though, and we'll continue on, so, uh. Then it's from prior meeting. Babe, you can't. Yeah, yeah, can't, can't do that. Uh, additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, you guys have any? Talking, okay. None of those, all, none of old business? Department reports, we're down to department report, so we'll start with the police chief. Go ahead, give us your report.
For one month, we had two hundred and twenty nine, uh, calls of service. Outside of that, we got the Sullivan Night Out tomorrow evening, uh, sixty nine, so we plan on being there. Interacting with the kids and the public. So we wanna bring some attention to that, that's been the first time I've had it for several years, so, uh, we're hoping that there's good weather and a good turnout.
Any questions for the police chief? Like you said, Sullivan Night Out, uh, pass, pass it around, we encourage everyone to attend, tell your friends, family, you got a day before it happens tomorrow night. Sullivan City Park is ready to go, I got the park manager telling me it's already in there, you know, uh, great, there's a county, uh, representative that's put this together, that's headed this up. You know, it's all the cities weren't happy to participate, um, you know, kids are gonna come out, and like you said, these two chiefs have got their fire department, their police department ready to go for it, so. Uh, Fire Chief, you're up.
Uh, for the month of July, our rescue runs, we had forty eight. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, medic runs, we had forty eight. And rescued ninety eight. For the year, we had medic for three oh, three hundred and four. Uh, our, our rescue three hundred and four and medic's four thirty one, total seven hundred and thirty five, total of this, this month is, or last month is ninety eight. And thinking back on what Mike said, we're also gonna be doing the night hours tomorrow as well, hopefully have good weather, interact with the kids as well, get things to hand out to them, and hopefully it'd be a good night, so, that's all I got.
Any questions for the Fire Chief? Do you see how the runs are broken down there? Yep, that's right there. He's got the monthly, keep track of that, so, alright. Moving on, next one up, uh, Chris Livingston, the Street Superintendent.
We've, uh, been patching potholes, working on the square. Trimming limbs around stop signs and. For school buses.
So school's back in session, I know he's been coordinated with the school, you know, those bus drivers help us out by calling and letting us know where there's some signs not visible, or, you know, limbs are hanging low, maybe. Storms like this passing through, some tree limbs may break off or something, and, uh, the school buses, so yeah, he's, he's been doing, any questions for Chris, and Street Superintendent?
Yeah, I got a quick question.
Isaac from the Daily Times.
Said that you were patching up potholes, where exactly?
Um, we've been all over. We, we started in three, we tried to stick in a precinct.
Then you said that you did work around the square, I didn't, I didn't catch what work you did around.
Well, we've been pulling weeds and we've patched some holes around the drains.
Then has there been anything else that the street department has been doing?
The trimming of the limbs, you get that?
Yeah, I got that, I got that.
Making up brush?
Making up brush.
The trails.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, just to go off of what Superintendent Livingston said, I mean, I think everybody's been fighting it. The vegetation growth this summer has been just wild, and it's constant, just weeds growing, the tree limbs, tree branches, tree vegetation, you know, uh, he's been mowing. Multiple times a week just to keep it maintained and mowed, so, uh, he's, he, they've, they've been working on. Street alleys, sidewalks, you know, uh, all around the square and all around the city, like you said, patching potholes with the weather and the rain, you know, the potholes developed, so, uh. Moving on, you guys have any questions for, indeed? Next one up. Is the Parks and Recreation Department Superintendent Kenley.
We mow at the park twice a week, mow weed eat, uh, spray weeds once a month. I mean, that keeps me busy, other than that, I basically help the street department with brush, potholes, pull weeds.
They're being modest, not telling you everything, you see that he's got.
I, I don't, I don't have a copy of my list.
Didn't bring a copy?
I didn't bring a copy of it.
So it's mosquito spraying, gravel and driveways, not driveways, added gravel to the drive at the park.
Prepared a soft fit on the shelf, or on the, on the bandstand. Assisted with general maintenance at the pool. Removed deteriorated telephone poles from the pickleball court parking area. Come in early, to help clean the downtown squares, spray for weeds. Pulled weeds from landscaping, trimmed overhanging limbs on North State Street to ensure safe clearance for school buses. Prepared park grounds for, prepared park grounds facilities for the upcoming Sullivan County Night Out. Prepared city-owned lawnmower that's damaged. Stalled wall mount the hangers in the park for organizations, string tremmers and blowers, assisted the street department cleaning and clearing of their maintenance bays. Transported materials from the city garage to the police department, added gravel to the drives at the park. Met with Crossroads Electrics to request a quote to relocate their electrical services in the interior of the yellow garage in preparation for demolition. Conducted mosquito spraying and responded to two calls during my on-call weekend.
Damaged storm drains and secure new, place dumpster on Core Street with safety cones, that too after on-calls, so yeah. You see, there, you know, it's twenty-four seven, um, round the clock, on-calls on weekends, evening hours, for everybody that works right there and sitting in those two rows right there. Any questions for the park?
I don't have a question for Cody as such, but, uh, the pool is closed, right?
Weekends it's open, evenings is pool parties, like tonight's a pool party, uh, tomorrow night's is gonna be open for, uh.
Night out?
Night out.
It's all kind of night out.
My question is, when will we get, like, year in this answer?
After Labor Day weekend.
I'm waiting on final.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I just wanted.
Have the numbers.
Participation sales.
Right. So, second, third week of September, okay? Okay. And the utilities director. Burkhardt has two sheets here, first one's gonna be the last, you know, work that they've been doing, and the second one's gonna be the sewer spreadsheet. Places around the city, either jobs have been completed or in progress or on the list to be addressed. You're up.
We've worked on multiple dig sites, all trying to keep them up at the same time, um, we're working to finish up East Chaney Street to alleviate a lot of that flooding, I can't say it'll all be gone, but. The biggest part of it, uh, there should no, shouldn't be the flooding risk for the gentleman that owns the home there, so. We believe we've got that taken care of, after watching the last rain event happen, we kept the water down to twenty feet near the railroad tracks, but it was nowhere near his home this time. Uh, we had a sewer main collapse on, I believe it was four hundred block of North Broad Street, we repaired, fixed that main, we had a spot in the alley, um. Well, just a block north of, or block south of here, and basically what we found looked like either old laterals that had been abandoned, or they were old downspout laterals that used to come out. Through all the rains, apparently they started leaching water and basically created just a sinkhole, uh, we repaired that in the alley and backfilled it with rock. We've been assisting with hydrodiving for milestone in the construction on the, uh, new trail project. Locating sewer lines, water lines, gas lines for them while their operators are trying to do, keep up with their digging. Don't know how many sewer calls we technically had, I, I recall three or four that we jetted, um, one of those, we got into a wad of tree roots, were able to clear the tree roots out of the main and return proper flow. Keeping up with the plant day to day with everything between the lab, um, planning processes throughout, mowing, weed eating, spraying. Again, assisting the street department when they need an extra hand with anything we can help with, so. Pretty much it.
Alright, any questions for utilities director, have any sanitary system, stormwater system, or anything else? Okay. Alright, moving on, nothing for the department. Citizens present to address the council. You wanna address your issue right now with, with us? This, yeah, yeah, yeah. If you push the side of that microphone, the green light, she's, yeah, there you go, or no, did the green light come on?
Yeah.
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 It's on.
Ah, pull that thing up there. If you would, just tell us your name, address you live at, and your concern.
My name's Jess Minks, nine oh six North Main Street here in Sullivan. My concern that I addressed today, when I went in and paid my son, I'm living with my son there, I went in to pay the bill that we got from the city, and there was a sixteen dollar fee. For stormwater. Every time it rains, it comes up in our driveway, our neighbor's driveway, I walk that area north of us and south of us there on Main Street. The closest. Drain that's open, that you can tell is a drain, is across the street from us where my other son, John, lives. And it's, it's there, and that's the only one, there's no drains on the west side of North Main Street. And I know that that is usually laid out in a pattern when they're putting them in, and when it comes time to repair and expand, it's done on a. District by district, how many miles there are to do and how much needs to be replaced. And my question was, why are we being charged for? Storms are sixteen dollars a month. But we sat and watched the water slowly seep down on our, half of our driveway, off the sidewalk. On, on the north side of Main Street, on the west side of North Main Street, there's no drains there, and I was just curious as to what the plans are, how it's laid out. As I've been involved in that in some, in a, in a different way in Michigan when I lived up there on the road commission. And I just wonder if there is a plan in place, and when the city is going to go forward with going into the areas like you have where we're at. And I realize out on East Washington Street, they're doing some work out there that is needed badly. To help with that, plus other things when the street issues. But, but my question is, is there a plan, and what is the plan, and when will it be put into effect? To look at the areas that aren't getting the storm watch water wa, taken away? That we have cars and motorcycles flying up and down North Main Street. When they get to our area, you can hear them slowing down because they've hit them before, and they have a hard time controlling their cycles and their vehicles. And my question is, is a concern, not only for us and our vehicles that are parked in our driveway, of somebody losing control and having them hit our property. But about the lives of those folks that don't realize what they're getting theirself into when they come down through their forty-five, fifty mile an hour. And all of a sudden, you got water halfway out in the southbound lane of North Main Street, and they hit it. And I've seen a couple of them really struggle to stay upright on their cycles, and I've seen a few of the, uh, vehicles with. Are the sports cars have a few issues coming down and getting back on to the, to the wet and out of the water, and that, that was my only question, is there a plan? Was it drawn up, is it available for the public to get that? And can we put the word out to those of us that are concerned about it? I've got grandchildren that play out in the front yard after it rains, and I sure hope that it's safe there when they come down the road doing forty, forty-five mile an hour. And hit that high water, and they don't come over into the yard and hit one of the grandkids. But I'm just curious if there is a plan in place, and can it be made available to the public? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concern forward to us and, and letting us hear, um, what you have for a concern. So, yeah, and stormwater, uh, I'll speak for a second, uh, you know, if you, if you don't mind, um, stormwater, uh, you know, you address the fee that you pay, correct? Yeah, everybody's going to pay a stormwater fee, is similar to, if you don't have a kid in that school, up to the school corporation, you're still paying the school corporation, correct? So that fee goes for the expense of the stormwater upgrades, fix, you know, fixing stormwater, and, and, you know. Trying to eliminate all the stormwater areas we have in the city of Sullivan that are a problem. And when the rain like this happens, and especially over the last several rains, we've received a large amount of rain really quickly. The utility director, he tracks that, okay, and he, he'll get a chance here in a minute to address it, or, or he'll look into that area more specifically, he could tell you about it right now. Uh, but in the past, we have had, uh, you know, I come from the public works world, and so in the past, there has been, I'm watching lightning, I don't wanna, okay. I don't wanna seem like I'm distracted.
I'm watching it.
You see it too? Yeah, so, uh, I know Attorney Falwell saw it this way a little bit ago, but okay, back to your question. In the past, we've had, it used to be B O N, uh, Beam, Longest and F, they changed to Aegis, uh, consulting firm, do a stormwater study. And there are several areas, I've got a map, now I'm not gonna tell you I have a plan, but I know a map of areas that are identified in the city of Sullivan. As the target areas to fix. And say Cross Street and Wall Street, okay, that's one of the top areas to fix. And what is it? I've seen it today, I'm, I'm gonna address this, you know, everybody in this room, I bet, knows what I'm getting ready to say. Even though you pay a stormwater fee, everybody pays a stormwater fee, that funding is still an issue, because it is costly, very costly. Sanitary's costly, stormwater's very costly, and we are trying our hardest to fix these areas when we can. That's where in the past, we've received grants to assist us, funding sources, funding opportunities, to do. Right past your eight hundred block is Price Street that runs east and west, and I apologize again for my voice, it's frustrating me, I've been under the weather and I sound like this. But Price Street, not too many years ago, a big stormwater line, and again, the utilities director may be more specific here, went from. Broad Street down to Section Street to put a big, large stormwater drain in that can be branched out over time. To go two blocks south, two blocks north, and catch drain, you know, if, you, you do sound like you have drainage across the street, so you do have stormwater drainage in your area. But it's a lot of stormwater, right? To where we need to catch that and send it out in ways through the creek, and, you know, like, there's directional, uh, uh, ways of taking the water out. And so, it wasn't too long ago, Price Street got a large trunk line going east and west down to Section, so, we do have a map I could show you. Of, say, seven, eight areas that are our next targets to, uh, you know, where the stormwater does build up on a heavy rainfall that comes down quickly. And these guys, just like Superintendent Levis has said, all of them have been out. I, I don't know what it's like right now, it's like, I do know it's raining, I don't know how heavy it is, I don't know how fast it's coming down, but on, on rain events, they go out and they clear stormwater drains. And they know the areas to go to first, okay? And I don't, I don't, I don't, I wanna say I've never been to the eight hundred block in a rainstorm, because I don't know of that area backing up. Like, you know, I'll, I'll pay attention, I'll go out there and check it, you know, and see on the next rain, I'll drive that way home tonight and see what it's like. But I wanna say, we do have a map I can show you, that is, it, it shows you a plan, it's gonna have this cross, I'm gonna go back to crossing wall, circle. And you're like, number one, that's the number one area, I'm sure utility director Burkhardt has spoke in the years past and helped form this plan. Like, the number two area may be, uh. Jackson and Maxwell, you know, that, areas like that, and then three and four, so they are identified, and that's what we're working towards with stormwater. So I'll start, I'll, go ahead.
I have one question, when you get ready to do this, do you bid these jobs out, or does the city do them all themselves?
No, no, we're, we don't have the equipment, manpower, you know, we don't, if it's a smaller job, we're gonna tackle it ourselves, in years past. That, you know, we, we've bid out jobs, and if they're over a certain threshold, they have to be bid out. You know, if they're under a certain amount, we don't have to bid them out, but we handle those ourselves.
Does the state of Indiana require low bid gets, is the, is the.
So if we get assistance like Price Street, Okra was our, you know, uh, department that we had funding through Okra to do Price Street. And so that had to be bid out and followed all the state guidelines, uh, with that, so if there's a requirement. That the state has to bid it out, that's why we have a consulting firm that handles that for us, so we don't miss any of those details.
Question here is, does the state require you to take the low bid? Or is there, is there a place in the law written that that has to be done unless it's for the betterment of the project? To go above the low bid to somebody that does a better grade of work?
So, yeah.
You all know that, that these contractors, different contractors have different grades of work.
Yeah.
And when.
And so we'll have a consulting firm.
That's my question.
Yeah, so we'll have a consulting firm that, when we open bid packets, we take it under advisement. Okay, it's the low bid, but we take it under advisement, and then we wait till the consulting firm does, dots the i's and crosses the t's, okay, I'm gonna use that expression. And then, when they say, yes, it is good, that's when we accept that bid, in front of the Board of Works, it goes in front of the Board of Public Works, and that's who accepts the bid for the work, so that's how it's done, so.
Lowest and best bid. I think I've heard referred to, Gene, on there, lowest and best bid, that gives you a win.
Lowest and best.
Lowest and best, lowest may not be the best, so you can go around the lowest, if you don't think it's the best.
Yes.
So they use that terminology, lowest and best bid.
That is a big fight that I dealt with when I was doing this sort of thing.
Yeah, you don't, you're not stuck with having, except the low bid if you don't.
Thank you. Has it got anything on it?
I'd just like to add that, uh, the flooding sounds like a problem, but to me, uh, anybody driving down my street fifty miles an hour is a problem. So if you're getting the water at the speed limit, uh, you wouldn't have that kind of act, so, and I'm sure they'll keep an eye on that, but, uh, that, I take that.
Small groups that.
Oh, yeah, yes, not, I understand.
I look outside and hear the.
Of course, they can be everywhere.
Black one or the green one or the dark red one.
There you go. Yeah, I also wanna add to this, because I started saying something about it, I think the lightning bolt got me sidetracked, right? Um, and they've had plenty of lightning bolts, if you guys are seeing it, you gotta, you know.
They're, they're in Sullivan County, they're in storm warning.
So.
Janice has to go back home. Do you wanna leave, Janice?
I wanna talk about, I've said, last night and this morning, today, uh, how you said, you know, do we have a plan? I believe that map, there's probably documentation that goes with it, it's a plan, but I'm not gonna say yes to it, 'cause I just, that map, you, when you see it, you can say, yeah, that's our, that, you can see it's clearly the plan. But I also wanna say, there's the mayor of Marion, Indiana, the mayor of Hammond, Indiana, and the mayor of Terre Haute, Indiana. They've all went on media today and have, 'cause I said it's the funding of it, right? And so, but how hard these projects are, they're only going to get harder in the future. And so, how hard these projects are, they're only going to get harder in the future because if, those three mayors have addressed in the last twenty-four hours, Senate Enrolled Act One is going to take a large impact on their community in the future revenue. And so, they're a certain size city. Imagine what littler cities and towns, municipalities are going to take, right? So, they've had hiring freezes where today, they've announced it because a Senate Enrolled Act One is approaching. And so, those funding mechanisms and sources are very important to do projects for small communities. And so, that's what I wanted to address too, was, hey, yes, we have a plan. It's just very difficult with funding. Even though everybody pays that, it's still a larger amount for a project than what that all adds up to, so.
There was a conference in Elkhart just recently and there was dozens of mayors saying the same thing that you're talking about today. It's a, it's an epidemic in all over Indiana now. I'll call it that too. It's going to result in some major funding shortages, major funding shortages. It's like the cities and towns got left out by the legislature and the governor's office.
As I see Isaac burning up his pencil back there. I'm sure Isaac's going to want to talk to me in the future about...
I've got a Howie news report. Isaac, you'd like to read. It's really interesting. I like to read Howie's things, but it's, quotes several mayors, had some really good quotes on it around Indiana.
It's easy for people like me to stand up and talk about what's happening right in my immediate community, but they don't hear everybody else in the room, that you guys on the boards and the people working for the city, hear from the people when they walk up and see them and start talking to them. Of all the places that you could be told need to have things done, I've been through that part.
So, thank you for addressing that with us. Any other citizens present to address the board? Having no one to address the board, then we'll move on to the council comments.
Just echo your comments on the difficulty that's present and future. It just doesn't seem fair that the state is capping us. If they want cities and towns to be the taxing unit and then they're telling us that we can only tax so much. To me, that's just a double dip of unfair. You know, the current climate is to just pass it, no matter what effect it has on communities and the citizens. So, that's about all.
Anything I'd like to say is it's going to be a rough ride. It's going to be all of us. It's going to be a rough ride. Get through all this.
I just want to say a couple of things. Reiterating that. Sullivan County Night Out, tomorrow night, Sullivan City Park, six to nine. You know, come out, enjoy a good evening at Sullivan City Park. Next thing I want to address is, I was not able to give a mayor's message, back to school message. I'll still send one out here in a week or so, you know, follow-up. I want to send a message out now to the, you know, the school's back in session, school buses are back out. Be very safe. Never pass a school bus with the arm out, you know, know the wall. I just, I know what happens. It should never happen. Our little ones are our most precious treasures. Be very cautious to save. But kids of all ages, college, high school, especially those elementary school kids, have a great year. You'll learn a lot from your teachers. Teachers, be patient. You guys are great and doing a wonderful job. But back to school has started. I guess day four was today. So, for the local school corporation here, I want to just make sure that message gets out there. Back to school, have a great year. Anything? That's it? All right. We're adjourned. We're adjourned. We're adjourned. All right, thank you guys for coming in.
It's been a nice time to go check here.
Yeah, we can keep talking because you guys are going out.
Timing is everything.